I'm not sure if I'm directing this to the right people.
Before you start, would you give your name?
Yeah. My name's Wilhelm Waters, born here nineteen sixty-nine. On the fire department and everything else, but I just got my property tax back. I'm really happy that it went up during the pandemic. That was awesome. But I looked at the numbers. I'm single, never had kids, never will have kids. And yet eighty percent of my taxes go to schools. And yeah, I see transplants coming in here left and right with their big vehicles. Thinking they're so special coming here getting this free education with people like me. Have been paying for fifty-one years. Granted, I did go to school here, but I think I've paid that back. There has to be something that can be done to give us a break who's been here who've never asked anybody to come here. When it was a great county. Not what it is now. With every tree being torn down just to build a new house. So what are my taxes doing for me? Not for everybody else, but for me. And there are propositions out there. I don't know if you're familiar with the one in California. Which allows people not, they don't have to pay property taxes if they don't have kids in school. But I am a single income. One person living in a small ranch in Brookwood. That can barely make it and then now it's going up again and I just. What am I gonna do? Will y'all gonna be happy? Will y'all run everybody out of here that's from here? But the people in Old Waverly, no other, other places get breaks? I just don't understand it and I just had to voice my frustration on that. There has to be something that you can do. To help the people who were here long before. There was a subdivision on every corner. And long before. Uh, the school system was one of the best in the nation, I guess, to come here, but just give us a break. This is our home. This is where we're from. Retired military. Clark County Fireman. Oconee County Fireman. And it just disturbs me when I get up at two o'clock in the morning to go on a call. Let's do these and I'm like, why am I doing this? I don't even understand why am I volunteering for the fire department? To go to somebody's half a million dollar house. Stand on their front yard. At two in the morning. And then I get my taxes back and I end up having to pay more. It's just too much. It's just too much and I don't want to move. I'm from here. Family's from here. That's all I have to say. Anything for me?
Well, let me, let me make a couple of comments. If it's got anything to do with the school system, you, you have to address.
Right. I'm not sure if I'm talking to the right people, but.
And if you feel like you have an issue with what the county tax assessor sent you, then I would use all of.
I have talked to her. I sent, I sent her a note. I sent her a note and I know about the appeals.
Yeah, that's, that's what you, you can do. And let me, let me say this. I think as far as taxes, the week levy. Uh, we do everything that we possibly can to be as tight with the money.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand your side. Your side is, is the twenty percent.
Yeah, and we, and we, we work very hard to. Do what we can to, to, to deal with that. And so, but, but we can't speak for the Oconee County School System.
I know. I, I've addressed it with Ms. Riddle. I, I've, I've sent in a note, but I can't get excuses just back saying, well, compare it to another county. I'm talking about this county. And as far as where to go from there, I don't know, but I gave you guys a voice. I was, uh. Wanting to come and talk to you respectfully and then maybe if there's something in one of your guys' meetings that you could bring up. I'm not sure what proposition it is in California, but I did hear about it. I'm not crazy about the state and their direction, but. I'm just saying it makes sense for guys who are in their fifties that have no kids, never will have kids, never had kids, single. You know, spent most of their life traveling around serving and now we want to settle back home. And it's just frustrating, man. I don't know where I'm gonna get, you know, the money comes from. All right. Thank you all.
Is there anybody else who'd like to talk or address for something that is not on the agenda for tonight? I've got two things. One is reminder that June sixteen. Uh, we'll have our town hall meeting and I think that's at six, six o'clock. So that, that's an opportunity for anybody who comes to Zoom too. I would, we'll still have that. Okay. You can bring up anything you want to. You got, you have all five of us there and, uh. Use that time to come and speak to your county commissioners. Also. Uh, there are three dates. July sixth at six P M, July twenty-seventh at six P M and August three at six P M. We'll be here. Uh, to talk about, uh. What will you do with a rollback on, on our millage rate? So, uh, we'll publish that. I'm just giving it out now, but in, just in case the times change, the dates, uh. That's what we'll be doing about our millage rate. And we said. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do the pledge. Do what you get? Oh, let's do that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Had a moment of silence. Yeah, yeah. First we'll have a moment of silence and then, uh, Mark Saxon will lead us into place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the flag, which stands, one nation, united, and universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Please accept my apology. Trying to be on. Time wisely sometimes get ahead of yourself. Now, uh, our approval of the minutes, May fourth, uh. Budget hearing on May twenty-fifth and agenda setting on May twenty-fifth.
I make the motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, somebody points appropriate time to make a change.
Change to the minutes?
Yeah. You can do it now. Do it now before he makes his motion? Yeah, you can go ahead. Make sure I got the right version. On our May fourth meeting. Uh, there was three motions that, uh, showed, uh, you, Mr. Horton and me voting against the motion. One was the Westminster rezon. One was the Ash rezon. And one was the strategic plan. Now, if I got, if I got an up-to-date copy or is, you all see that? And Mr. Horton, I, I don't remember voting against those three now. I know I didn't, so. I'm, I'm sorry. I just, uh. Does anybody else see that on May fourth?
First one was.
The Westminster?
Westminster?
Yeah. The other one was the Ash rezon and then the next was the strategic plan. Motion. Yeah. Okay, we'll make a note of that.
Yeah.
And go to the next one. What was the other correction? That was the Westminster Academy Rezon. The Ash. Rezon, which is the next one. You see that? All right, and then go to the strategic plan vote, which was the next item on the agenda.
I think in that instance, I'm, with the. For the spacing of it, I think it's where it looks like it all dropped down. So it made it look like you all, that part of you voted for, part of you voted against. I think that's what it was.
So what I was saying was.
Right, it's cra- it's just the way the spacing is, it looks like, because it looks like it's split.
Okay, that's fine. Just as long as.
Yeah, I'll go back there.
As long as the permanent record shows that I voted in favor of those three minutes here. Okay. That's all I want to make sure.
Yeah, we, we got it.
That doesn't matter. And it was also. One, I think on May twenty-fifth, May twenty-fifth minutes, uh, there were a couple of wording. Where it was under the proposed budget. Word that. That is the picture you had, correct?
That's, that's correct. You have some minor, either, either primarily script errors that are reflected physically or twenty-one to the twenty-two budget. Uh, net instead of debt and then, um, instead of elections, you could impart some recreation department specifications in those. We request you approve those minutes with those certain corrections.
What we have is the corrections. Commissioner Harden has, uh, asked to be changed and also on the May twenty-fifth minutes, those wording. I think y'all, y'all have it the twenty-fifth.
So recognizing it was a clerker and that the spacing issue.
Yep.
Asked immediately, I'm gonna, uh, recommend we approve all three minutes.
Okay, so, those in favor?
Aye.
Number five, resolutions and ordinance is this is a discuss and consider a resolution providing for the levy and collection of annual F law tax. To provide funds for the Oconee County School District General Obligation Bond Series twenty twenty-one.
Hey commissioners, this is, uh, reformer Board of Commissioners. The Board of Education, uh, seeks general obligation bonds, uh, to utilize for their capital projects. And so in order to do that, we affect that the Board of Commissioners has to approve this resolution you have in front of you so they can move forward with the, with the general obligation bonds and tax thing.
Anybody have any questions? I'd say that's something we do. We have to approve things that the, the, uh, school board does. Way it is state law. There's no question. Don't entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the. School di- excuse me, School District General Obligation Bond. For series twenty twenty-one. As per, as presented.
Doug is in favor?
Aye.
I'll read it to the rec- I'll state it to the records.
Yeah, I think the folks just, we do that before we get into the zone. So everybody knows what the, uh, the room's on.
The, uh, the, the chair will, will call staff up to present the case, uh, with no time limits. Um, upon closing of the case, the chair will recognize the applicant to make the presentation. The applicant or those speaking on the applicant's behalf will have. Twenty minutes, uh, for their presentation. Um, the applicant may reserve any balance of the time for rebuttal. Upon closing of that, the chair will recognize the anguish in the speaking opposition. Opposition will have twenty minutes to present their case and testimony before the Board of Commissioners. And upon either a conclusion of their presentation, it will not have rebuttal time. If the applicants have any rebuttal remaining, they may then finalize for rebuttal any testimony provided by opposition. Uh, upon exhaustion of this time, chair will close the public hearing and the Board of Commissioners may ask questions of either the applicant staff or opposition.
Thank you. All right, uh, first one tonight. Special use number P twenty-one dash zero zero five three. Owner John T. and Brittany M. Wardlow, location fifteen sixty-one Osborne Road, acreage five point five three, zoning A G. The request is for special use approval for the purpose of having a septic tank cleaning service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Pro Tim and, uh, commissioners. Again, this is special use P twenty-one zero zero five three, John Wardlow owner. This is, uh, located, uh, just off of, uh, uh, in the northwest corner of the county, uh, just off of Osborne Road. Uh, you see the aerial and the overall, uh, parcel map of the subject parcel. It's in, currently zoned A G and is in the country states character area. And again, the applicant is requesting a special use approval for septic cleaning service at this, uh, location. Uh, you'll notice the concept plan provided, uh, with the location of, of the parking of the, the vehicle. Again, these are existing conditions, uh, subject property. And the staff recommends conditional approval with one condition. The planning commission also recommended approval with the condition.
And now the applicant.
Hello, John Wardlow, fifteen sixty-one Osborne Road. How are you ladies and gentlemen doing? Wonderful. Um, I don't really know what I need to say here, but I guess you guys know why I'm here and what I'm trying to do. I am opening a, uh, septic pumping company and, uh, I need this rezone in order for me to be able to make a living. So. That's where I'm at. Thank you for my, for your time.
Are any, any people that, that, uh, are in, that want to speak in favor? Everybody, for, for, how about, I want to say. Are there, are there any people here that you want to oppose this? Am I? Questions?
As far as the actual location, what's gonna happen there as far as the storage?
Yep, so I'm gonna have storage.
So I'm gonna have storage for the truck, trailer and equipment as well as septic storage, tanker storage. What you see located on the, uh, design plan. Well, I wanted to get this taken care of first, you know? Yes, I would, I would like to use, it will, yes. Af- after I get this taken care of, I'm hoping we'll be able to utilize some funds to do that. Thank you.
I'm making motion to approve special use number P twenty-one dash zero zero five three, John T. and Brittany M. Wardlow. Fifteen sixty-one Osborne Road with one condition.
All right. Number two. Rezon number P twenty-one dash zero zero five four Rhino Mini Storage. Door side of Morland Heights Drive, acreage eight point three eight. Current zoning O B P. Request O B P to O I P to allow for an assisted living facility and general office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, this is reason P twenty-one zero zero five four Rhino Mini Storage located just north of the city of, uh, Watkinsville. Um, along Morland Heights. This is the portion of the property that is under consideration this evening. Um, this portion is currently under construction for the mini warehouses that were current, that were approved previous, in the previous rezone. Again, the current zoning is O B P and it is located in the Silk Center character area. And again, they're requesting a rezone from O B P to O I P for an assisted living facility and general office. These are representative architectural photos of the office and, uh, the assisted living, uh, elevations as well. This is the concept plan that was submitted with the assisted living along, um, four forty-one and the office space at, at this location. Um, in front of the, the mini warehouses that are under construction now. Again, this is just a zoomed in of the concept plan. And staff recommends conditional approval, uh, subject to the six conditions. Uh, the first three are our typical conditions. Number four, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building on the site, developers shall convey to Oconee County sufficient right of way. Uh, and construct improvements as may be required to bring Morland Heights Road up to applicable. Standards of the Oconee Unified Development Code with geometry and base and pavement thickness, meaning minor collector standards or structural and geometric. Equivalent as approved by the Oconee County Public Works Director. Such road improvements shall be shown on the site development plan submitted for the project. Number five, no metal siding shall be permitted on any building in the development. Number six, the total building square footage on the property shall not exceed a hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred square feet. Planning Commission also recommends approval subject to staff conditions. Thank you.
Yes. Um, Frank Pittman, I live at fourteen hundred Saxon Road. Um, I'm here representing the, uh, property owner Rhino Storage LLC. As Mr. Herring mentioned, this property is, is currently zoned O B P. It was owned for, um, is today it's owned for eighty-eight thousand square feet of office space. Um, from the previous rezone. Um, what, what we're requesting is, is, um, what I think is a little bit of a down zoning from O B P to O I P. Uh, to allow for a, a one hundred bed assisted living facility and a twenty thousand square foot office building all on one. Both buildings would be one level each. Um, the, um, the traffic generated by this project at complete build out would be four hundred and eighty-three trips a day. Um, which is about a third of, of what the estimated trips would be under the current approved plan for this property. Um, so the, the traffic numbers would be well down. Um, this assisted living would be locally owned. Um, it would not be a nonprofit. So it, so you know, that always comes up in conversation. So they are taxpayers, um, which obviously is, is, is good for all of us that live here. Um, the, um, as Mr. Harry mentioned, staff recommends approval. Planning Commission gave unanimous approval for this. And, um, it, it, it meets the character area for the, for the property. Um, we're okay with all the conditions as, as outlined and I'm here to. Ask for y'all's approval. Um, I won't spend a lot of time. I'll, I'll save some time for rebuttal and otherwise I'm open for questions. Thank you.
There was no ones, I don't. I don't think there was anyone, uh, that signed up to speak in favor or opposed. Unless somebody came in and I didn't say it. Anybody else say?
No.
Oh, I put it up through the commission.
I just have. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, probably appropriate to ask if there is any opposition, just in the audience.
Is there any opposition?
Right, so the condition will require that this road meet current county standards. So Moreland Heights will have to be improved to, to county standards to their entrance. There is, if you can see a ten-foot landscape strip along this portion. But as far as a zoning buffer, that's not required across a, a street to the properties across the street. So there will be landscaping, you know, along this frontage, but there will not be a zoning buffer.
This portion, that's not to be developed.
That, that, that's correct. The, so my client, my client's intentions are, is, is about this assisted living facility. So that, that is their primary focus. The office building, I, I always hate to use the word afterthought, but that's kind of a secondary use for the property. If somebody comes along and wants an office, that, that is not priority one for them, the, the assisted living facility is, is the first priority. And to co- can I comment on your road question a little bit too, just to touch on guy's comment? So the, the, as he mentioned, the property to the, that's shown as lot one, just to the north of this. Is under construction today for some self-storage that was approved with the previous rezone. So that first entrance to the east is going in with that. And so the road's already been designed to be upgraded from there over to, to, I guess it's business four forty-one. So that part's already been designed, so it would just be adding this, this little section here as well.
Next one, special use number P twenty-one zero zero five six. Owner nineteen seventy-three Hog Mountain Road LLC. Frank Pittman will be speaking for him. Location nineteen seventy-three and nineteen seventy-five Hog Mountain Road acreage two point nine four zoning B two. Request special use to allow for commercial development with modular sales.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we will present both this and the special exception variance together in this presentation. You'll need to act separately on them at the time, when the time's appropriate. Especially use P twenty-one zero zero five six and special exception variance P twenty-one zero zero five seven. Again, is located at nineteen seventy-one Hog Mountain Road. This is the aerial photograph of the two parcels located along Hog Mountain Road. And the variance is, is for the rear parcel. Again, the current zoning is B two for both parcels. And it is in the civic center character area. And again, the applicant's request is special use for modular buildings to be used in the commercial development. The applicant is also requesting the variance to U D C section eight oh six and U D C table eight point one to waive the requirement. For a fifty-foot incompatible land use buffer along the rear property line adjacent to the single family residential zoning district. The staff recommends denial of the special use request due to its incompatibility with the long-term land use goals and objectives of the County Comprehensive Plan. However, should their present request be approved by the board, staff does recommend the following six conditions. One, two, and three are typical, are standard conditions. Number four, all modular buildings shall contain wood, brick, or stone accents as shown in. Applicable representative images submitted with the application. The said accent shall be in keeping with the established architectural style of the existing building at nineteen seventy-one Hog Mountain Road. Number five, all modular buildings shall be placed on a permanent foundation. And number six, no more than five modular buildings shall be installed on the subject property. The planning commission recommended approval, subject to staff con- conditions. And then again, for the special exception variance, staff does not believe that it meets all the necessary conditions to grant the special exception variance. However, should the board approve the variance, we would ask it to be with these three conditions. One is our standard condition for design structures. Number two, a twenty-five foot wide vegetated incompatible use buffer meeting the standards of U D C section eight oh four, eight oh eight four B. Shall be installed along the rear property line adjacent to the village of Stonebridge subdivision. And number three is six foot tall opaque fence shall be installed along the rear property line adjacent to the residential use.
Because he did both the number three and number four on the agenda, I'm gonna go ahead and read number four. Special exception variance P twenty-one dash zero zero five seven owner nineteen seventy-three Hog Mountain Road LLC. Applicant, uh, private engineering. Location nineteen seventy-five Hog Mountain Road acreage two point three seven acres. In the request, as Mr. Aaron said, waive the requirement for fifty-foot incompatible land use buffer.
Thank you.
Y'all have these in the slide, but others, we don't talk too much.
We'll kind of discuss the items separately. My mind, they're kind of two, two separate items that don't really, I mean, it's the same property, but they really don't apply to each other too much. So in, in talking about the specials, I guess I want to talk about special use first. So the, I guess it's been six, seven months ago. My client and I first, first met with planning staff to, to talk about my client's vision on this property. You know, the, the last year and a half has kind of flipped the world upside down and, and. People don't want to go in restaurants and, and restaurants are struggling because they, they can't have people come in and they've got all this space and. And, and they're having to move tables out and they don't have, they can't find staff. And so the restaurant business as a whole has been just a disaster. Starting to prove a little bit maybe, but it's, I think it's still gonna be not what it was for a while. My client, you know, came up with this vision to create an, an outdoor space for families. To be able to, to go do stuff, I mean, people were stuck in their houses. You know, kids are stuck in their houses and, and people are going nuts with that. So he has his vision to, to build outdoor space with a, with a kind of a community park that, that, you know, his private funds take care of. And as part of that to, to build this almost outdoor eatery area. Where, where people can come up and, and they may drive up and go through the drive-through, they may, they may walk up. They, they may drive and park and, and eat and kids play in the, in the, in the ball field and. And, and they can get outside and still do some stuff and, and, and aren't set up in the houses. So, you know, I'm sure as most of you have seen, it's been in the paper. Chick-fil-A is, is one of the, you know, they're, they're already running the food truck on the property today. They're, they are on board to go into one of these small buildings. So the, the, the plan is, and I want to be very clear. This property is zone B two, so, so as you see on the site plan, this site plan can be built today. A- as shown, the, the uses are not in question. The, the, the sizes of the buildings are not in question, the number of buildings not in question. The parking meets parking requirements. There's, there's a parking calculation shown in the, in the, in the supplemental. So everything about this plan meets the U D C today. Except for what, what my client would like to do and, and. He, he's seen some of these facilities in Greenville, Spartanburg has some of these and some other places. Is to make these cool kind of edgy new, new age buildings that are modular buildings. In the sense that the shell itself is modular. The, uh, these, these, they're, they're rehabilitated cargo shipping containers. The shells are brought in, everything else about it is built on site. You got a concrete foundation that's poured, the, the shell is mounted to the foundation and all the interior is, is built on site, just like would be allowed by U D C today. All the ex- exterior finishes and stuff are done on site as well, so it's really, the, the modular part of it is a shell. So when, like I said, six, seven months ago, we started this conversation. The U D C really didn't, didn't say you couldn't do this, but it really didn't say you could and it really wasn't a mechanism for it. So at that time, Mr. Herring, I, I guess with, within conversations with you guys or under, I don't know if he. Whether it was his own volition, but he, he wrote an ordinance that covered this kind of situation. That basically gave you guys the, the ability to issue a special use for modular buildings. So that, that code section went into effect, I think about three months ago, so this is the first request under that. So, you know, the. The, I, I guess the, in reading through the staff report, the only, the only negative that, that I saw was that. These buildings don't complement the existing adjacent buildings. And, and I don't disagree with that, but again, this is the first request that we've ever seen of this. So, you know, they, until you see some of these, you're never gonna complement the existing buildings adjacently. The. The request would be for, for, for him to be able to use these modular shells to come in. And again, like I said, I mean, he can, he can do this today, the, the uses are not in question. At the planning commission, there was a lot of conversation about parking and traffic and. Whether this is the right place for these uses and, and it kind of went off in a direction that wasn't really what the request was. You know, did, planning commission did still approve this. They, they felt like, and, and I do too, that, you know, we all as a community want, want people to get out and about and, and have more pedestrian friendly. Facilities and I, I think this is a good start to being able to do that. So I would request approval for that special use tonight. I, I don't know how we need to handle, the guy, do you know how we need to handle both requests that's ever presented together? Do I need to present the other one or y'all need? Okay, do y'all want to vote first before we talk about the second one or? Okay, okay. So I, I'll leave, I'll leave some time if the case said I need for rebut, rebuttal on the special use, but that, that's the special use request. The special exception variance, so I want to give you some history on this property. So my client bought this property in two thousand sixteen, it was zone B two, it's been zoned B two for. Twenty, thirty years, a long, long time. The property adjacent to the east of this property, at the time that he bought this in two thousand sixteen was zone B one and O I P. The U D C does not require a buffer between B two property and B one is what is shown as R one now, a portion of what is shown as R one now. At the time was B one and O I P. There's not a requirement in the U D C for a buffer between the B two and O I P and. B one that it was before, so there was no requirement for a buffer. In two thousand seventeen, the owner of the, the R one property. That came to you guys with a request to downzone their property from B one and O I P to R one. At the time, the, the request that was made and the staff report that was presented to you guys said that there was no adverse effect on adjacent property owners. I, I think nobody realized that there was an effect on adjacent property owner and that, that effect was, once, once you guys approved that zoning. It then required my client to now have a fifty-foot buffer on the back of his property. Which calculated out is over half an acre of B two property, which is pretty valuable. On top of the fact that now he has to plant, you know, a fifty-foot wide, you know, landscape buffer which could cost, I don't know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars. So the, the, let me add to that as well, so after the rezone was approved, the way the U D C reads is. If, if now you have a fifty-foot buffer, if the. Commercial property doesn't have a buffer, then the residential has to put the buffer on their side. So the properties to the, to, I guess to the west, southwest is Porterfield Tire. They were already built out, so they didn't have a buffer, so it then required the R one to put the buffer on their side. With R one came to you guys, the R one owner came to you guys then and asked for variance to bill away the buffer on their side. So the buffer obviously didn't mean that much to them at the time. They were just, you know, trying to get the rezone done, so. All, I, I'm here to ask for you guys to approve this variance, basically to, to give my property owner the property rights that he had when he bought it. The U D C hasn't changed since then, he hasn't done anything to, to, to take property rights away from him. His property rights have been taken away by an approved rezone, which he didn't have a problem with, but at the time, he didn't know that it affected him. So I'm here to ask for approval on this variance to basically to give him the rights that he had before the, the property next door was, was rezoned. So again, I'm open for any questions you guys may have and I'll save any time I may need. Thank you.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the project? Okay, I've got one person who signed up to speak against Carol Bridges.
I'm Carol Bridges, I live nineteen eighty Hog Mountain Road, which is straight across the street, corner of Tuxedo Lane and Hog Mountain Road. I mainly in, in opposition of this because of the traffic. The traffic is horrendous right now without anything in there. These properties that he owns. Nineteen seventy-one and nineteen seventy-three, which is the two existing buildings. They do not have a road to go between them to go to this back property. It's just a parking lot. It's a busy parking lot. Picnic basket has a drive-through, you come through that parking lot, go around to go through the picnic basket. So there's traffic constantly going through a parking lot. They say there's plenty of parking, but all of their businesses are not. What's the word? They don't have business, it's empty, they don't have it full. So they don't know what traffic would be if I put another business like the one seventy nineteen seventy-three. There's picnic basket, a tanning bed and then a large space that's taken. I don't know about the other business, but I do know that traffic through there is hard. And they have only one entrance and exit, even though they say that the service station says they can use their entrance and exit. And when they enter, I mean, I have turned my signal lights on to get out of my driveway anyway. I've done that for a long time, you know, I'm not complaining about that. But the traffic is getting worse as the time goes on. And I can't see anything good coming from this, there's no walking areas. That's my opinion on the traffic and as far as what they're wanting to put back there, like I said, and I guess you read in the paper, it looked like a carnival to me, but that was my opinion. The property that they're talking about, the one seventy-three and the one seventy-five that's on the back or nineteen seventy-five. That's one point nine seven acres, I think. Point five seven of that belongs to that building in the front, so he only has acre, less than acre and a half in the back. And you want to put five businesses, a playground. That's a lot to put in that small of an area. Plus a parking. They're not wanting to put additional parking, I know there's a problem with parking. They're not wanting to put additional parking. I know there's a problem with parking. I see it. I mean, my picture window is right straight in front of them. I see it every day. So, let me see if I got anything else. Yeah, uh, in front of the planning commission, they said they had three entrances and exits. That was counting the gas station. And I only see one plus the gas station. And I've lived there for forty-seven years. Like I said, there's no walking areas. The pattern of it is not desirable. It knows, like he said, he admitted, you know, it's nothing like the structures that they have there. My concern also is the fact that that's gonna be back there in the dark. Unless he lights it up like a baseball field. And when the businesses close and these playgrounds are back there, who's gonna be back there? Who's gonna be watching what's going on back there? And you've got businesses in front that, you know. These days and times, you can't trust people. You can't do it. You know, this is a public area for people to come to and it's not surrounded by an open area. You can't see that there. So, you know, that concerns me, you know, parties and drinking and. Whatever might come about. And I understand the owner wants to. Put up surveillance, but that's not gonna stop it from happening. So that's about all I got. So anybody ask me any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I'll just take a few minutes to kinda touch on some of this Bridges comments. I guess the first thing I'll say is most, most of the comments I heard, um, and seem to be. Zoning type comments and not necessarily what the request is tonight. You know, I would, the, the traffic, I completely understand traffic concerns on Hog Mountain Road and I mentioned this at planning commission. You know, Okuny County has done a very good job over the years separating residential from commercial properties. To alleviate some traffic issues. Um, you know, you guys had. That was one of the huge deals on the last big rezon y'all had, the Publix deal. The, the problem on Hog Mountain Road is that's kinda the separator between some residential and where the commercial starts. Again, this property is, is, is zone B two today. Um, so the, you know, the traffic part of it. As, as much as I, I get it and, and I, and I respect that, that comment. That doesn't really come into play with the request. Other than I'll say this. That this parcel is, is two point three acres on, on the back, um, which is larger than. All, most fast food restaurant parcels, it's larger than the racetrack convenience store parcel. And it's zoned where any of those items could go there today, um, without this request and without us coming to you guys. I think that, that what my client is proposing on this property is significantly less of a traffic. Generator than, than what most B two properties, um, would generate, um, especially. Ones that, that are in the Butler's Crossing area. There's a comment about no road to the property. As, I think I mentioned, my client owns all three of these pieces of property there is across access agent, that's recorded at courthouse. To use access on all three properties, to use a parking on all three properties for all of these there. There are, um, I think seventy-seven parking spaces, um, out there today for these three properties. There's only one, one empty slot, uh, business wise. So the, the parking calculations that's shown. Are based on total square footage and not based on existing businesses. So they're, they are based on everything being full. And there's more than enough parking to meet UDC requirements for that. There was a comment about three entrances and exits being mentioned at planning commission. I, I didn't mention that, so I don't know where that might have come from. I, I don't remember hearing that and I've never said that. There's one, one entrance into the property, all three parcels are, are, come off that, that main entrance. As far as walking areas, you know, I, I get it. I think that. That there probably should be at some point in time some sidewalks put down Hog Mountain Road. To go from Butler's Cross into some of these businesses, to some of these subdivisions. I think that, you know, it was talked about at planning commission. That, you know, the, the Morris Hill sidewalks have, have, I think the comment was made by one of the planning commissioners that it's basically become a gym. I mean, anytime of day you go down through there and there are people on those sidewalks and it's been a success. I think, you know, eventually I'd like to see Hog Mountain Road do the same thing. It, it's not there today, um, but you know, it's. Again, you know, we've got commercial businesses there that, that seem to be functioning without, without sidewalks. There was a comment about, um, drinking and parties. My client has said that, that, that he does not plan alcohol sales on this property. Obviously does, you know, is zone B two, he could have a restaurant that does sell alcohol. It's his intent not to do so. But the B two use, the existing B two use would allow that. But that is not what his intent is. His intent is for this to be a family oriented type establishment that, you know. Gets people out and, and are able to, you know, associate with, with their, with their neighbors. I think I've touched on all those comments and again, I'd, I'd be open for any questions. Thank you.
No more speakers from the public for, yes, I'll open it up to commissioners who might have questions. While y'all thinking, I'm just. Guy, if, if they were to come in. This was not occurring. They were just gonna take the zoning. Could they pull permits and start and there would be no buffer at all?
On that back parcel, uh, a development permit would have to be pulled for that. And it would go through our review process and it would require a buffer if it were a B two use.
They were not coming before us.
Right, yes.
If, if this thing. Were, were approved and it was. Built with the five modular structures there. What would be your estimation of attendance?
So, you know, they've had, they've had the Chick-fil-A food truck out there, which is a little bit of a test to see what these things will do. Um, I think the most, uh, cars they've had in any day out there for that was like a hundred and thirty. So, um. Over a full day. Full day. I mean, they're only there breakfast and lunch, but Chick-fil-A, as we all know, I think is, is gonna be the, the biggest. Traffic producer, um, unless something new comes along, we don't know about. Right now, they're the biggest traffic producer everywhere that we see around here. I mean, there, there were projections, um, and I don't have the, my report in front of me, um, but there were projections. That, you know, this whole, the whole thing is, is, I wanna say it was something like six hundred trips a day. You know, if all five businesses were in place, um, which again would be significantly less than, you know, a, a, a standalone B two business that took this whole property.
For me, this is something else too, cause it is, you know, just observing it and going out there and look, it's not like. Typical B two property.
Right.
Because generally if it's a fast food, it, it would be up.
That's right.
Let me ask you this. If, if this were approved. And the structures were, were built, brought in, let's say for instance, it didn't work. What would the owner do?
Well, so, you know, that's, that's one of, I feel like that's one of the benefits to this type of development because. If these things are all stick built and, and, and you've got five small buildings that are stick built and it doesn't work. Then you're either, you either got these buildings that you gotta do something with or you gotta demolish them and, and, you know, redevelop the property. In this instance, they are modular. Um, if, if the development didn't work, they can. He, he could sell these things to, to some other development somewhere else where, where, where maybe it is working. And, and these things can be picked up and, and taken off site without having to actually demolish something. So they, you know, that's, that's a benefit to them, to them being modular.
Okay, let me ask you this. Uh, what? What would you do for like, uh, restaurants to sell?
So there, there is, um, can you go back to the site plan?
So there is, on the site plan, there, there would be a, there is a restroom building. That would be built. You know, it's on, on site, it's part of that. That is, that's why this one's a little bit bigger. One side of it is, is the Chick-fil-A. There's a smaller corner there and then this back corner, that would be a restroom for the entire facility. Let me ask you this one. Who would be responsible for cleaning that, this, that bathroom facility?
Other, I mean, the property owner would be responsible for, for all maintenance. These would be, you know, rented or leased buildings. So, you know, that would be, he'd be a landlord, basically he'd be responsible for all the cleaning.
How about? The person or persons that rented those facilities, the structures. Would that food be prepared on site or would it be brought in?
So it, i- i- it could function both ways. Um, I can tell you that, that the Chick-fil-A process. Is they would be preparing at one of their restaurants and in this case, it would be the Atlanta Highway Restaurant. Um, and bringing it in prepackaged and it, it's what they call a distribution hub. And it, it goes back to some of their requirements and, you know. One, one Chick-fil-A owner can't have more than two full-sized restaurants and this guy already has two. He has the Upsbridge one in Atlanta Highway. So. They can do a distribution hub and they're basically bringing it in from the other stores and selling it. They have to, they have to sell it within so many minutes of being prepared. Or they have to throw it out just like they would in a, in a, in a regular store. So they, they basically have a runner that goes, that, you know, every half hour or so, you know, back over to the, the restaurant. This is, again, this is B two. He doesn't have all five. Tenants lined up. Um, Chick-fil-A is obviously the anchor. So, you know, somebody could come in there and, and need a full cook-on-site kitchen. It, you know, it would be allowed to do that. They, um, there is sanitary sewer line that runs right through the middle of this property between these buildings. You know, if, if they desired to do that, they would be able to tie into the sewer. They'd have to do a grease trap and, you know, follow all the restaurant code. You know, through the health department. Um, but they, it, it could be either or depending on who the tenant is.
Trashed it up, restroom cleaning. So it's pretty personal doing all that during the day, working, once all built out.
Right.
Does he not owe the tenants of the other two buildings a little bit of, cause if you take five buildings when it's built out, that's two or three persons working each, each place out. Twenty parking places that I've said, said already. The tenants have the right to park it for their businesses. Or, I mean, is he gonna, is he gonna, is he gonna designate park a rich business and then have separate parking because? And it's, and it's the, the whole, the whole, um, schematic. I mean, you said drive-through earlier. You know, they got the parking along the backside of the right building, I mean, on, on curve there. So. You got cars trying to back out, you got cars coming in, go to drive-through and you got cars trying to find parking places.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I understand your question. Um, the, so the parking and, and it should be part of your packet. So the, the parking was calculated. For, for all the uses on the, on the three parcels and there is enough parking for, for, I don't know if this is your packet or not, it was in my submittal.
I mean, I'm looking at it. I mean, I, I've been over there several times too and I see.
That's right. And but there's a lot more parking there today than what is needed for the businesses out of there, for the, for the two buildings. And there's, and you go there anytime during the day, there's, there's a bunch of empty parking spaces. I was over there today at two o'clock. Yeah, that's right.
And I, I just curious is how the tenants that are already there are, I mean.
I agree and he does. I mean, they, you know, they, the way most of these group commercial developments work is, you know, business isn't necessarily a sign. You've got five spots, you've got six. I mean, sometimes that is the case. The way most of these, these. Group, you know, commercial developments work is. We've, we've got enough spaces out there to meet the, the code requirements. And, you know, there's enough space calculated for everybody on, on this development and, and this does meet that. You know, one thing I'll say about these, this, this particular use is, a lot of this will be after hours too, when, when some of these other businesses are closed. So, not always. Yeah, yeah. But, but, but there's not a, that's right. But there's not a, but there's also not. You know, these businesses are not a, they don't have tables where people are coming in and sitting down like a Chick-fil-A either. I mean, they're. That you do and most, but what I'm saying is most of the outdoor stuff, when people are taking their kids out there, a lot of that's gonna be in the evenings. Most of the day, um, sales are more than likely gonna be people that are, that are, people that, that are going to lunch on their, on their lunch hour. And they're coming in there, they're getting something, they're leaving. But the parking is calculated, so that there is enough parking on the whole, on this whole complex for all of these businesses. And it, and it meets the UDC requirements.
Mr. Pittman, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
On the, um, the, the food businesses itself, are they gonna have an individual permit? In addition to like, just say Chick-fil-A, would they have an, an additional permit for that site?
You know, I, I don't know that I'm. Knowledgeable enough on food permits to answer that question. I. My assumption is that you have, you would have to have a permit on each, on each site. But that's something, I mean, that's kinda outside of what, what I do. You know, they, they would get their own, you know, interior permits, but. I think the way that we usually work is that every site would have its own, you know, health department permit.
And you mentioned, you mentioned the sewer, so that, that was gonna be one of my other questions about that. So sewer would be available for.
Sewer's available and, and, and I did reach out to utility departments, so they, they've issued a sewer available, water and sewer availability letter for, for the project.
And so I guess each one of those buildings would then have their own water and sewer bill as opposed to being for the entire complex.
I, I think that would be the easiest way for, for the tenants and for the, um. Probably for the property owner as well. Um, I don't know that, I don't know that that far along has been planned out about individual services and stuff. I think that would be the, the ideal situation, for sure.
And we've been talking a lot about Chick-fil-A and I'm assuming that the hours that they're gonna be there. It's not gonna be like it is now. If they run out of food, you know, they can just pull up and go. So they plan to be there for the breakfast through dinner.
I think it'll be somewhere in between what a, what a typical restaurant is and what a food truck is because, yeah, they, I mean, they do have. They are paying rent once they go into this versus pulling a truck and hitting the road. I think they, they would be probably more apt to stay a little longer. Um, my guess is that they would not be there. You know, till whatever, nine or ten o'clock, like they're opening a regular restaurant. Just because they are having to bring food in, they're gonna be there for the rush times. And then they're probably gonna be closed. I, I, I'm not privy to that information necessarily. I'm just, I'm speaking what I think would be the case.
This is mostly designed, you know, after I.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's when the, I think that, I think in the evenings and probably weekends is when the. People are gonna go out there and enjoy the pavilion and the kids are gonna play in the, in the fields and that kinda stuff. I mean, you're not gonna see that much during a weekday. When, you know, most kids are in school, most people are at work. Um, there're gonna always be some, but I, I don't, I don't think for the most part. You know, that area is gonna be used during the daytime.
Let me ask you. If, if the commission didn't approve the, uh, what you would like a zero buffer, what does that do to the business model?
I, I don't think that changes this business model. Um, and, and that's why I kind of mentioned at the beginning, to me, they're two separate, completely two separate requests. Um, you know, the, the variance is, is to me more the, the property in general. Um, it, it, it's gonna, it's gonna make the business model more expensive because when, for him to do this, he's now gotta plant this buffer that he didn't, that he, he never envisioned having to plant. He didn't, you know, wasn't required when he bought the property. Um, so it makes it more expensive from day one, for sure. Um, I think it's more of a long-term deal. Um, I think eventually, you know, this property does get redeveloped, probably into something bigger. I mean, that was a time a couple of years ago, um, when, when he was gonna build a big office building on this property. Um, and, um, you know, construction costs were up a little bit and he backed off of that. I think there'll be a time down the road, whether that's ten years, fifteen years, whenever that is, when, when this property, you know, gets developed again. Um, because this isn't a huge development. This is, it's, you know, it's, it's really an enjoyment-type deal. Um, and that, at that time is really when that variance is gonna be a bigger issue. Um, because, you know, like I mentioned earlier, the, this, this buffer that's now required of him, i- i- ends up calculating over half an acre of, of B two property, which is over twenty percent of this property. Um, it's gonna make it really difficult at that time to develop. A- and, let me, can I add to that? We feel like now's the time to, because that, the rezone of adjacent property is not that far in the Riverview Mayor. And most of you guys were here, um, and remember that project. Um, and there are no houses built in there today. Um, no houses even started in there yet today. So, yeah, we feel like it's a better time to come to you guys who approved this rezone to discuss this variance. Um, because you, you, you understand the, the, the project that, that caused the variant, that caused the variance request. Whereas ten years down the road, when our house is down through there, um, and it's a different commission, it, you know, it's a different, different conversation, a lot more history to try to explain.
Why I have to take this mask off? Um, I got some questions I need to really probably ask, uh, Mr. Herring, uh, but you stay close by.
Right.
Uh, it's currently zone, uh, as you say, B two. And I, I certainly feel for Mrs. Bridges. I know at one time, but Tuxedo Lane was out in the country at one time. Most everything in Oak County, we used to be out in the country, but not anymore. Um, so the B two, uh, Mr. Herring, uh, applicant would be able to, to do what he wants to do as far as, uh, what he has planned, other than the modular units.
That's correct. The B two would allow the use.
Okay. How does this impact the, uh, the, the, will he be required to do any improvements for the ingress or egress onto the, what I call Highway two oh seven?
Right. So we would look at that through the development review process, right, through our DRC process. Um, the proposed engineered plans would come to us and we would analyze it at that time. So that would be handled by staff. That wouldn't be something you would need to address at this point.
Okay. Alright, uh, secondly, what about signage? Uh, I know Oak County County has a sign ordinance. What, what would we be seeing, uh, out on Highway two oh seven? As far as signage, what would be allowed?
Well, I believe there's an existing monument sign. Um, but we would have to look at that as, as they propose a new sign or additions to that sign. But obviously it would have to meet our sign ordinance.
Okay. Uh, in a, in a B two, of course, that's probably, um, are outdoor concerts allowed in a B two zone?
A special event venue would have to be, uh, it would go through a special use permit process. So, no, not, not by an outright use.
So, so what we're being asked to look at, uh, there wouldn't be no, uh, there wouldn't be a, you know, uh, so there would be no outdoor concert.
Right. And I don't believe that's being proposed either. No, no, that, that's, that's not the case.
Okay. Alright, uh, I guess it's appropriate now that continue to ask questions about the buffer.
Sure.
Uh, Frank, you'd mentioned that, uh, and I, I need some clarification from Mr. Herring. You said that the, the property behind had a B one and OIP zone. I, is it, do we have dual zones for that track?
We have in the past. Um, so there, there has been split zoning, but this one was, was OIP. Uh, for, I believe it was Athens, uh, the regional had it for a potential multifamily, uh, CCRC type, type of development. Um, and then this portion of it down here was, was the, was the B one. Um, and so, so, uh, uh, this was rezoned for that OIP use many years ago.
So when the applicant purchased his property, this property behind him, which is now R one, was OIP. What was the buffer required for that?
Uh, there was no buffer between B two and OIP.
There's no, no buffer required?
No, sir. Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so between the, the two uses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, alright, I need to, thank you.
I got one to follow up with. Some of the buffer. But even though the two, when I say the older zones, there was none, there was none at that time. But once there was a rezone, the, the applicant in this case did not question when the signs went up about what may happen to my property.
I, I don't believe there was any comment from them at that time, but I don't recall any.
There has been a history in the county to protect neighborhoods by buffer.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman, I've got a question about your plant, your landscaping plan or your concept plan.
Okay.
Um, you know, there's several existing trees that are there that, you know, canopy over into your property or subject property. Were you planning on clearing those, um, if you did have a no buffer, were you planning on removing all those trees?
I, I don't think his plan is to remove anything, at least with this development. Um, you know, I, I can't speak for what would happen if it's redeveloped, you know, ten years down the road. Um, you know, cause like I mentioned, I mean, they, he had, he had plans drawn up, um, architecture plans and everything for, for a big office building. At that time, he could have built right up to the property line. So, um, I think if it redeveloped, that could happen. Um, with this project, no, there's no, there's no desire to do anything like that.
Cause it looks like some of those trees probably go into the property, you know, just by the scale that's here, maybe twenty-five feet. And then some of those other trees that are fairly large, they can't be over into the other property anyway.
Right, right.
I think I got one last.
Okay.
Uh, I believe there's a project similar with a larger project like this in Greenville. What, what is it a part of, what's around it?
Um, I haven't been there myself. I've only seen
No one has, so I've
Yeah, I mean, I've just seen the pictures that my client took when he was over there. I, I mean, I think there may be, um, there may be a baseball field or something next to it about, if I'm, I'm kind of guessing a little bit, but I, I really don't know what all's around it. Um, obviously Greenville's a, you know, larger market than where, than where we are. Um, and then there's one in Spartanburg as well. I don't know what's around it either. Um, and I think there's some others, but those, those specifically I know of.
Any other questions? There are no further questions. And I will entertain the motion on the first special use number P twenty-one zero zero five six.
I'll make a motion to deny number P two-one zero five six. Thing to really say about on that road, special use of that, of course, that's a small sort of sale.
I'll second it.
Alright, I've got a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aha.
Those opposed?
Aha.
Denial two points. Alright, now we need a vote on special exception variance P twenty-one dash zero zero five seven. This is the, uh, special waiver of the fifty-foot landing structure.
I make a motion to deny there's P two-one zero zero five seven. And I can say about on that road, wait for five feet.
There are no seconds that would die.
I guess I have a question about this, uh, this one. Is this tied to this first one?
Now, that, to me, there's two separate votes. Uh, it's spoken to in one big picture, like we do on occasion, because they're all four, but I think they're two separate. Two separate issues.
Mr. Chairman, could I get some clarification from Mr. Herring, please?
Sure.
Um, if you can go back to the, uh, curious as to the, uh, impact of the, uh, that Mr. Mr. Pittman had made some comment about the joining property owners. I guess it's a tire store there.
There is.
And, uh, so, uh, they currently, will they be required to have a fifty-foot buffer?
Uh, no, sir. Cause, so the difference between these two is this one is a developed parcel. The Porterfield Tire site is a developed parcel. The seventy-one B, the subject parcel is not a developed parcel.
Okay. So, uh, so Porterfield Tire could build right up to the property line?
Right. They don't, they don't have a, a buffer on that, on that site.
I'd say, yeah.
That's correct. They don't have a, they don't require a buffer on that site. And there was a variance approved, if you'll recall, um, for the R one subdivision side, that, that you guys approved to reduce the buffer that would have been on that side.
I wasn't here.
Yes, okay, so.
So, alright, on the other side is Kitty Land.
Yes.
Uh, and I guess from that, there's just like a playground.
Right.
So, so they're, they have no buffers either.
That's correct. That is also a fully developed parcel and it is grandfathered in. It would not be required to have one.
Okay. Now, I noticed that the planning commission had, uh, approved, uh, this special exception uh, with the conditions that you had lined down. Is that correct?
Hmm.
And that was a twenty-five foot, uh, vegetated, uh, buffer. And then also a six-foot tall fence as well.
Yes.
What, you're saying, saying no?
Uh, my apologies. No, sir. Yeah, that's correct. They did not, they did not, they, they discussed, I think, some of the variance, but it was not a, there was no opinion or, uh,
Thank you, okay. Thank you, Frank. Appreciate you. But that is the staff recommendation. If the commission chooses not to, to, you know, to go along with your recommendation.
Yes.
This is your fallback position.
Yes.
Okay. Now, in the fifty-foot buffer, uh, it has to be, it can't, it has to be vegetated in some way. There's no, no open space, right?
Correct.
Okay. That answers my questions.
Do you have a question? Make that motion again.
Motion to deny special, uh, exception variance P twenty-one zero zero four five seven. On that road, wave the front of her, fifty-foot Cadillac bucket.
I'll second it.
Motion. And then second, do you deny? Questions?
So by saying that you're denying that, you're saying that you're allowing the, uh, the B two property to go to the property line without the buffer?
If we deny, let me ask a question. If we deny, we come, we come back to vote.
I'm denying the wave, the basketball waiver, the second way.
He wants a fifty-foot buffer, he ends up.
Okay.
That's how I understand.
Cause I think Mr. Mr. Herring was, his, his staff had recommended denial. And so I was just making sure which, which avenue we're looking at.
So fifty-foot buffer stays, that's how I understand. All those in favor of that motion?
Aha.
All those vote?
Aha.
Alright, now number five, special exception variance P twenty-one dash zero zero seven one. Advocate Thomas D. and Jessica Adams, ten sixty Derby Lane, point six-three acres. West is reduced to rear setback or accessory building greater than one hundred forty-four square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is variance P twenty-one zero zero one seven, uh, located in Kingland subdivision off of Derby Lane. Uh, this is the aerial of the subject parcel. Uh, it's currently zoned R one. Uh, subdivision suburban neighborhood, uh, character area. And this is the concept plan that you have in your packets. Uh, you'll notice the location of the proposed shed, uh, back here in the, the back corner. Again, the property owner is requesting variance from UDC section four-ten zero one C two and UDC table four-point-one to reduce the rear setback from forty feet to nineteen feet for a proposed shed. And staff recommends approval. There does meet all necessary conditions to grant the special exception uh, with the one standard condition. And two, the rear setback shall be reduced to nineteen feet only for the area of encroachment of the proposed shed.
Yes, we're here.
Could you state your name and your logo and your address?
Uh, Jessica Adams, ten sixty Derby Lane, Bogart, Georgia, three oh six two-two.
Thank you. Uh, would you like to say anything about?
Um, just the, the shed is really for lawn equipment. Um, I haven't had my car in the garage for over a year and a half. Um, so just trying to put the lawn equipment that we have, the pressure washers and the lawnmower, uh, and all the different blowers and stuff that we have. Um, putting it there. We do have a pool in the center. Um, so the, the variance would help with putting the shed more towards the back of the property.
I have no one to speak for or against. Do you have anybody on? Do you have anybody on? If there are none, then I'll turn it over to commissioners to, uh, asking questions they might have. Have you talked to your neighbors?
We have told.
Uh, we have talked to our neighbors on the sides of us.
And they have no problem with it?
They expressing.
No, no one said anything.
In fact, they have sheds already.
And they, they already all kind of have sheds in the backs of their properties probably greater than, than that. I'm not, not to be like putting any under, anyone under the bus, but, um, we just want to make sure we went through the, the route of making sure it was permitted.
Thank you. Any other question? If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve special exception variance P twenty-one dash zero zero seven one.
Uh. Two conditions?
Yeah. Yep, with the two condition.
Last second. Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None of them. Thank you. Okay, that concludes.
Yeah.
Streetlight District. That's what I was saying. That concludes the, the dose, and then we move into number six, uh, Streetlight District for Stonewood subdivision phase two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this, uh, comes to you this evening as Streetlight Tax District number B dash zero sixty dash L two. Uh, this is for Stonewood subdivision phase two, and it just requires a board approval of the special tax district, uh, uh, to accept the streetlights and, uh, to begin charging those property owners. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have it.
Any questions from commissioners? Go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion in front of the district for Stonewood subdivision phase two.
Second.
Motion in the second, any questions? There are none, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving to personnel matters. We have three appointments to the Animal Services Board for two-year terms to begin July first, twenty twenty-one, and expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I made a motion to appoint Chelsea Fox, Heather McFadden, Marshall Mitchell for those terms today.
Your motion?
Second.
And second. Any questions? I'll entertain a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consider, next one, consider one appointment to the Family and Children's Services Board for a term of five years to begin July one, twenty twenty-one, and expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve Joseph Nunnely, uh, to the Family and Children's Services Board for the terms you stated, sir.
All right, second.
Second.
Any questions? Uh, I'll entertain a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have three appointments to the Kipoconey County Beautiful Commission for three-year terms to begin July one, twenty twenty-one, and expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm making a motion to appoint Susanna Hall, Elizabeth Hodgson, and Lisa Popus for those terms stated.
Second.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Here are none, I'll entertain a motion. Or vote, excuse me.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, last one, consider four appointments to the Tourism and Visitor Hero for two-year terms to begin July one, twenty twenty-one, and expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve Amber Deuce, Deisha Hagwood, Stephanie Van Dyke, and Casey Dinn.
Second. Got a motion in the second. First question coming. Here are none, I'll entertain a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Out of number eight. Second public hearing in consideration for adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time. Uh, board, I come before you tonight to present the FY twenty twenty-two budget. I don't have a PowerPoint for you tonight. I went to a great deal of length, um, last Tuesday night before this commission, on, uh, May twenty-fifth. The total of all the funds for the FY twenty twenty-two budget is fifty-eight million, four hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. This includes a general fund budget of thirty-two million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Special funds of three million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Capital projects fund of six hundred eighty thousand and eight hundred dollars. And special purpose local option sales tax funds of eleven million, thirty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Enterprise fund of thirteen million, five hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. The FY twenty twenty-two budget supports Oakoni County's strategic plan and also accommodates the potential to reduce the millage rate in Oakoni County. If there are any questions that I could answer at this time specifically about the FY twenty-two budget, I could be glad to do that. Uh, the, our fiscal year ends on June thirtieth and the new fiscal year begins July first. Uh, so I would respectfully request, uh, the board to consider a resolution to adopt the FY twenty twenty-two budget. If there are any questions before that, I'd be glad to answer it at this time.
Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to ask any question? Disappointing. Uh, ready to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt twenty twenty-two because your budget is presented in total of fifty-eight million, four hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars. That those general fund of thirty-two million, six hundred ninety-one, three hundred twenty-nine dollars. Special funds of three million, nine hundred fifty-five, three hundred eighty-two dollars. Gap project fund, six hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred, uh, six hundred eight, eighty thousand, eight hundred. Wash funds of seven million, thirty dollars, eight, thirty thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars. Enterprise plan of thirteen million, five hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. That includes the FY twenty-two fee schedule.
I have a motion?
Second.
Here are none, I will entertain a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
I can't have a vote if I don't offer a pretty.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the commission, uh, publicly, uh, county administrator and the finance team and all the departments and the constitutional officers and specifically, uh, Donna Norton, our budget officer for, uh, a long five-month journey. And I appreciate all the input that we received and, uh, look forward to executing the board's strategy starting July first. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And all, all the staff. Okay, uh, countywide matters, consider awarding design services contract for administrative building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Uh, if you recall, a week ago, I briefed you that we were in the midstream in the process of procuring design and engineering services for the administrative building site. And, um, walking through the process briefly, we submitted, uh, solicited an RFQ, RFP, which is qualifications-based, solicitation for design architectural engineering firms. We received nine quality solicitations, a four-person internal review panel, scored them on the basis of combination of qualifications, personnel, projects, uh, and pricing. Um, the, a file four was created and then references, um, solicited from them to to gauge previous work from the references. And then last week, we conducted interviews of the four firms, um, to go over the final, uh, presentations. And then a final rank order was created independently, uh, from the four panels and then a final firm selected. Uh, we have, what we have before you is a, um, the, the winning firm, the top rated firm was Hillfully Rossi and Associates Architect, along with their subs. Uh, the submitted price for the services are five hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, which would be funded out of the remaining two thousand four SLOs of the SLOs twenty twenty-one funds. Uh, they go to the administrative building. I've noted in, in the, um, in the document, there's ancillary costs that will be associated, such as geotech survey, inspection work. Those are often, um, items we go to a third party such as GeoHydra, typically who we've used in the past for those services. I would not necessarily go through Hillfully Rossi. Those are others. Other than that, the five ninety-seven is an all-in cost associated with it. So the recommendation is, uh, let's approval authorize the chair to execute a contract with Hillfully Rossi and Associates, as well as provide the necessary budget amendments, uh, to move forward with this. Can I answer any questions you may have?
I think what, I couldn't recall. Have we used these people before?
We have not.
Okay. And of the people who submitted proposal, was there any local, uh, applicants for that?
Not local. I looked on the city, you mean, I couldn't.
Well, in the vicinity, yeah.
Uh, not local in that they were the crime. Um, there, there were a few that were subs.
Okay.
All of it.
Bye.
Also, again, rest. There are, there are no funds left in the two thousand four SLOs.
Fred, there will be no funds left after this. As of two thirty.
Yeah, I don't know how many times that pops up, but.
Just sends it down.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present or on Zoom that have any questions about this? Here are none, then I'll entertain a vote.
First chairman, I'll make that motion that, uh, we accept the recommendation, award the design permitting and construction manager contract to Hillfully Rossi and Associate, and allow the chairman to sign the finalized contract.
Associated budget amendments.
With associated budget.
Second.
First, in a second. Any comments? Here are none, I'll entertain a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't vote again, but I do approve this. All right, uh, number ten consent items. I would like to, uh, jump in and ask that, uh, the, the number four community block development grant. Set aside, we'll deal with that after we deal with the consent items. And it's just for some clarification and some language. Nothing really changed.
Any more objects to the synergy?
Can I make that motion that we approve the synergy and with the, with the set aside or, or taking off the block grant and addressing it separately?
Second.
Further questions? Here are none, I'll entertain a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Same, Mr. Chairboard, um, I tip my hand a little on the administrative building, but on this one, we need to keep our accountants and, uh, our overseers happy on this one. So I request, um, for the senior center CDBG construction contract, we add language with the needed budget amendments. And also state just for the minutes, the grant budget is for six hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. And the senior center total cost will be covering over that amount, which, which negative is sixty-nine thousand, eight sixty-two. I'm just getting that out there for the, uh, minutes and the record. Just request that you approve it with those, um, minute additions for our accounts.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion if you're, well, let me ask you, is anybody public or? Nobody seen, anybody in the public or making comment? Mike, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the community development block grant, uh, as stated by our, uh, justice.
Thank you. Motion in the second. Further comments? Here are none, I'll entertain a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think we've got a reason for to have a executive session, so. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Oh, I need a question. All those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
All right. I'll prove it out there too.